... violation ordinance to order. Can we have roll call, please?
Counselor Sikala?
Here.
Counselor Krsati?
Here.
Counselor Hendrickson?
Here.
Counselor Ludwig?
Here.
Counselor Mangini is absent. Counselor Nasuda?
Here.
Mayor Nelson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pisner?
Here.
Counselor Russo?
Here.
Counselor Santinella is absent. And Counselor Ungary is absent.
No.
Nope, sorry. I looked over, I didn't see you. You look beautiful tonight, Lori.
Good catch, Sheila.
Nine members are present, two are absent.
Thank you, Sheila. In the event of a fire and emergency, there's two means of exiting the council chambers. Exit out the rear doors and walk a safe distance away from the building, or through the side doors, down one flight of stairs, and out the rear doors, also a safe distance away from the building. The following notice of public hearing was published in the Hartford Courant on Friday, April 11th, 2025, Town of Enfield Legal Notice. Notice is hereby given that the Town of Enfield shall hold a public hearing in the Enfield Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, on Monday, April 22nd, 2025, at 6:45 PM, to allow interested residents an opportunity to comment on the Proposed Inland Wetlands and Water Course Agency Violation Ordinance, dated this 8th day of April 2025, by Sheila M. Bailey, Town Clerk. The ground rules for the public hearing are: There is no time limit, but I ask that each person not take up too much time, so that everyone will have the opportunity to speak. After each person who desires has had one chance to speak, I shall permit those individuals who desire a second chance. After those individuals who desire to speak a second time, I shall permit those individuals who desire a third, fourth, et cetera, time. Please refrain from personalities. Who would like to come up and speak? Steve?
It's our Assistant Town Planner, Steve. Good evening. Hello? Okay. Good evening, Town Council. My name is Stephen Heiney. I am one of the Assistant Town Planners and Inland Wetlands Agent here for the Town of Enfield. And I'm here today to present to you all the Inland Wetlands Proposed Fines Ordinance. The fines that are within this ordinance are not designed to go after every single violation that we have. We prefer to try and work with the violators at first, whether it's through informal means. Sometimes they're just unaware. Sometimes they use the notice of violation or a cease and desist, depending on the severity of the violation. But if we do come across a case where, after trying to work with the violator over and over and over, they're not willing to come into compliance with the regulations, that is when a citation may be issued to try and help enforce compliance within the Town of Enfield regulations. As the regulations sit right now, they're only as strong as people's willingness to protect Enfield's natural resources. But adding the monetary value of a citation gives the wetlands regulations a greater level of strength that they are currently missing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. And we did post this since the last meeting, so the public would have an opportunity to review the changes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Kelly?
Kelly Hamler, 10 Hartford Ave. I am Commissioner on Inlands and Wetlands. I am in support of this. Most people that come in front of us, if it's a cease and desist, we educate them and they correct it. On the very rare occurrence, we want to have some teeth to be able to get some... so they'll comply. So I hope that you guys will all say yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Donna?
Hi, Donna Corbin-Sabinski, I'm the Chair for Inland Wetlands. I've been on Inland Wetlands since June of 2011, and the Chair since February 2015. So I'd like to thank you all for looking at this ordinance for us, to help us get some compliance along. And I also want to thank the Town Attorney's Office, Attorney Mark Serrato, who's out here, for writing up the ordinance for us. It was very helpful. A few of the members here are present. I think there's four of us present here today, to answer any questions or concerns you may have as we discuss this later on. But we do hope that you will vote for this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Donna. Anyone else going for the first time? No one? Anyone for the second time? Seeing none? At this point, I will close the public hearing and thank everyone for coming. At this point, I would just like to thank the Wetlands Commission. I think it is one of the best boards we have in this town. Your leadership, Donna, is unbelievable. Other than my wife, I think you're the best Chair that Inland Wetlands has ever had, and I have to say that. You know, we all know why. But again, thank you very much. I personally do support the process, and I think the council has been working in that direction for years, to try to get, you know, some meaning to the ordinance that we have in town, because they mean nothing if there's nothing behind them. So with that said, anybody else? Seeing none? I don't know if we can... No, right.
This is just for the public to speak at this juncture.
So a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor? Thank you. We are adjourned until 7:00 PM.
April 7, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is made in second and comments, corrections or concerns? Seeing none?
Yes, I have corrections.
Go ahead Cindy.
Okay, the correction, Mayor Nelson, is with the regular meeting, the minutes reflect town manager Bronson suggested the Abbey Monument be moved from in front of the church on Enfield Street to the front of the town hall. Mr. Bronson said ultimately, decision will be the council. The descendant of Thomas Abbey met with Mr. Bronson, Mr. Belinda, and Ms. Pfeiffer Hall to discuss the reservation of the monument. That is incorrect. As you well know, the descendant met with you, Chris, Steve, John Santinella, me, Kelly Davis, and a couple others. So I'd like-
Father Gush?
Yes, Father Gush, yes. So if we could have that correction, because the record obviously should be accurate.
Thank you Cindy, that was a very good catch. I agree with that. So I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended. And Sheila, you, yep.
Second.
Motion is made in seconded as amended. Any further comments, corrections, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? And one abstention? Thank you, and that's Lori. And then the special meeting of April 16, 2025.
Second.
Motion is made in seconded. Any comments, corrections, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions. One abstention, Councilman Russo. Thank you, everyone. Tonight, we have no special guests, so we'll move right into public communications. Any person who wishes to address the council shall first be recognized by the chair and shall state their name and address for the record. They shall limit their remarks to five minutes. After each person who desires has had the chance to speak, those desiring to speak a second time will be permitted to do so and shall limit their remarks to three minutes. During public communications, item number seven on the agenda, public members shall limit their remarks to two rounds, eight minutes. During public communication, item 16 on the agenda, if prior to 11:00 PM, each person shall limit their remarks to three minutes. Public communication shall be limited to one hour unless extended by a majority vote of the council. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any individual member. All remarks addressed to the administration of the town shall be addressed to the town manager and not an individual employee. Public members shall observe proper decorum and good conduct and shall refrain from personalities and improper language. Okay, who would like to come up and speak? Ma'am?
Nope, no problem. Rebecca Green, 152 Sheridan Road. Good evening, I am here again, as promised, to continue advocating for our teachers, students, and schools. I brought someone to help me tonight. Let me introduce you. What is your name? Amina. And how old are you?
Five.
Five. Who's your teacher this year? Mrs. Curly?
Yeah.
And will you be in her class next year?
No.
Where will you be?
In kindergarten.
Good job, baby. Okay, mommy's turn, okay? I brought her here tonight so you can see what her- so she can see what her mom is trying to do for her and her friends. I wanted her to see what standing up for something important looks like. I wanted to put a face to the children we're fighting for. This is one of your youngest students. She has ADHD and receives speech services for language development. She has an IEP. She will finish pre-K this year to become a kindergartner in August, where she will share a classroom with around 17 to 18 other children. The following year, she will likely share a classroom with 29 other students, if things don't change. The state average for class size is 18 to 20. These kids have to be our priority. Education has to be our priority. No parent here from any political group wants their children to miss out on the education they deserve. At the last meeting, a council member asked us to watch the budget meetings because budgeting is hard. I spent $30,000 on childcare last year and $10,400 on premiums before co-pays and co-insurance. I don't need to be told budgeting is hard. Do you know who will not suffer in my home because budgets are hard? My children. We need to treat the town budget the same way and make sure the people we protect are our children. Give them the education they deserve. If a tax increase is required to fix what has been broken, I am willing to pay. I'm willing to pay not just for my children, but for the benefit of everyone, to receive a quality education. We can't have rising costs for everything around us and not expect things to change. If you fear the idea of having to increase taxes because you're worried about your constituents not voting for you in the fall, you aren't equipped to do this job. You are right, budgeting is hard. The hard part isn't having to spread it thin. The hard part is making the choice to do the hard thing when necessary, even when you're taking a personal risk. That's called moral courage. These are all of our kids. They represent who we are in this town and will one day represent what we value here, when they grow up and start their own families. They will one day buy homes if we don't change things. My kids won't be able to stay here or won't want to because of the educational system. If I was shopping for a home right now, I would not choose to move my children into an alliance district. There are families now who won't choose our town because they saw we let go of 127 educators and staff. I would ask you, how many of your children are in our school system right now that will be impacted by your choices? If you're not going to approve the proposed budget in full, I would ask you, please tell my child to her face that her education isn't enough of a priority, because that's what we are talking about. So again, when you're looking at this budget, think of her, think of Amina. The choices you make will directly affect every year of her education from this year on. You're doing great. Think about what she will miss out on if we don't properly support our schools and teachers. Think about the opportunities that won't be available to her. She may not be your daughter, but she is a daughter of Enfield and will grow up here and know this as her home. Make her proud to have grown up and learnt here. Did you want to say anything else? What did you want to say?
Please fund our schools?
No, that's okay. I think that pretty much sums it up. Listen to the voices that are behind me and that are in front of you tonight. They matter, my daughter matters, and education matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to come up and speak? Ma'am?
Hi, Sherry Wynans, 1227 Enfield Street. And I had a colleague that asked me to read this for them. And I would just like to say, before I start, I'm just asking you to fund the budget, as the superintendent has worked so hard to get it. That is my own personal belief, we need it. It's been a really rough year, having 30 kids in a class. And we need every ounce of money that we can to help us get the resources that we need. So I'd really appreciate it. Onto theirs. How do I go the extra mile? When I first heard about this campaign, the long-distance runner in me said, heck no, I am not going to go an extra mile. I'm not going to go an extra tenth of a mile. But I was willing to lace up. When I realized that I was supposed to talk about how I go the extra mile as a teacher, I must say that I backed off. Teachers don't usually do that. We don't usually talk about what we do that's extra. Not that we don't do the extra. What most of us do as extra, that's definitely not required by a contract, we feel like that is what should be done for our students, whether or not any non-teachers understand. So I was kind of in a dilemma. Do I really tell anybody that I wrote each of my 40 French 8 students a postcard over break? That did not really seem like extra. To me, that just seemed like the thing to do, since we are studying a unit on taking a trip and expressing what we did on said trip. Speaking of French students, do I really talk about the efforts that I have made to promote studying French? I had fun preparing and participating in the Bouste Noel building and Mardi Gras celebrating. That did not seem like extra either. The next French 8 unit is about mental and physical care, is organizing a plastic axe-throwing contest to help relieve stress. You should try it, it really works. Is it really extra? What about buying five yearbooks and using them as bait, I mean reward, to recognize exemplary academic habits and results and behavior? Students earn tickets and one winner per class was chosen before break, so that families still have time to order a yearbook online. That almost seems a little too self-serving to be considered extra. I guess talking about the extra that I do is not that difficult. Imagine what my other JFK and EPS colleagues could tell you. The night before my first marathon in Cozumel, Mexico, the inspirational speaker said, "Start slow, taper off", mainly because of the weather conditions. No matter how much you train, you're never quite ready for the heat and humidity of Mexico, even at 5:00 AM. Those of us who are in this race called teaching could probably heed the same advice. Start slow and taper off. We have trained well, but the conditions have definitely heated up and the finish line seems to keep changing, so that we end up going extra miles, whether we initially intended to or not. So members of the town council, tonight I remind you, I go the extra mile every day for my students. Now I'm asking you to go the extra mile for our students by funding the full budget proposed by the superintendent. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sherry. Anyone else? Dr. Kalman?
Hello, I am Dr. Gerald Kalman, and I am a lifelong resident of Enfield. I am on the Board of Education.
Your address, please.
I'm sorry, 74 Spruissland Road.
Thank you.
I should know that. So I, not only am I a member of the Board of Education, but I am a pediatrician who practiced pediatrics here in this town for a number of decades. And so I really wanted to speak as a pediatrician primarily, to really, really press upon this audience the need to support the superintendent's budget proposal. A school is not meant to be a warehouse. And I'm concerned about the number of students that are being forced to pack into classrooms, which is not a conducive learning environment. Added on to that is the challenge of having so many high-need students in the town of Enfield. I think something like 20% to 25% of our students are high-need students. That's enough to fill all of Enfield High School. Those students require very intensive management. And that cannot be done with the limited number of counselors that we have available in town at the present time. We need more counselors, we need more psychologists, we need more therapists. So I'm not sure if we're even going to be able to get close to what we need, even if we were to support the superintendent's budget proposal. But I would just simply remind you that the school forms the foundation for a child's life. Everything that a child does subsequent to these years is molded by his childhood school experience. So let's not deprive them of the education that they need and that their parents desire. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Man.
Maureen Griffin, 98 Abbey Road. Spoke to you recently about the conditions in the schools that not able to always meet the requirements of the legal, legally binding document called an IEP 504, setting yourself up for legal ramifications when those are not met. If we're going to talk about being fiscally responsible, you don't invite suits of that type. Another thought I had was, yes, times are tight. So when you, in our family at least, when we're looking at a tight budget, we decide, what is our priority? Not just now, but in the long term? What cuts in our budget will have the longest- will have the biggest negative impact if we make them? You cut the schools, that's not something that you recover in one week, one month, one year. The cuts that happened last year were incredibly destructive to the schools, to the staff, and mostly to the children. You've heard from parents repeatedly, you've heard from staff. It is not a good situation in there. If you do not support the budget as submitted, which doesn't even get anywhere near back to where they were, so still fighting to even meet those legally binding documents, if you don't support it, you're just setting the schools up to fall even further behind and much harder to rebuild.
Thank you, Maureen.
Good evening, my name is Jessica Soul, and I live at 10 Brook Road here in Enfield. I am a special education teacher here in Enfield. I work in a self-contained setting in the Autism Spectrum Disorder, or ASD, program. I go the extra mile above and beyond typical classroom duties. I draft and collaborate personalized education plans for each student based on their unique abilities and their unique challenges. For my particular students, this might include adapting for their sensory needs, communication differences, and organizational challenges. This requires careful assessment and ongoing adjustments throughout every day, week, month, and throughout the year. What motivates and what challenges a student varies from day to day. I've become skilled at adapting materials in multiple ways to use for different students. One lesson might include a visual support, such as a first-then board, where we tell the student first Learning Station, then Legos, for example. Social stories, which may- which are created to help students understand situations that they may not be familiar with, such as one of my fifth graders, who is currently getting ready to move up to the middle school. We've been working on a social story with that student. I use visual schedules. We start out the day with everything on a colored side of the paper, and as we go throughout the day, things are moved to the finished. They love it when this side is empty. We use consistent routines to help my students feel secure and to reduce their anxiety. This detailed planning and preparation takes significant time beyond my schoolwork hours. The work needed to produce quality IEPs, to collect the data, to record the data, and to create progress reports simply cannot be completed in my 45-minute prep period. I go the extra mile by advocating for my students. In IEP meetings, I work with specialists and service providers. I keep detailed records to meet the educational requirements. For my students, this might mean advocating for their sensory breaks, their communication support. Sometimes I need to teach other students about why some students communicate using an iPad. Some students wear noise-canceling headphones. I also have worked hard to build relationships with my families to help them understand the educational terms and endless jargon that fills our rooms. I work hard to empower parents to be active in their children's education. I totaled up my classroom Amazon spending from late August until today. I'm not going to give you an exact dollar amount, because quite frankly, my husband is watching me. But I can tell you, it has exceeded several hundred dollars of my own money on classroom materials. I create sensory-friendly calming spaces. I buy materials such as laminating pockets and all the Velcro that I can purchase for the specialized learning tools, such as these schedules. I also work to provide fidget tools and whatever else might be needed. Headphones are expensive. I did have some kind donors who gave me some at the beginning of the school year, but students can be rough on them, and they break quickly. My emotional investment in my students is just as significant. I build strong connections with students who are facing various challenges, and I celebrate their victories that may represent very big progress. For some of my students, this could be a difficult or awkward social interaction, or mastering their self-regulation. I support and guide their families in navigating the challenges of raising children with some kind of disability. I work through the paperwork demands, limited resources, and sometimes slow progress. But I maintain the belief in my students' potential when others only focus on their limitations. As a teacher who supports my autistic students, I try very hard to stay updated on best practices and continuously expand my understanding of neurodiversity to create the best inclusive classroom possible. I am also taking steps to go the extra mile by working on my second master's degree to make myself a better educator. I go the extra mile for my students, and now I'm asking you to go the extra mile by fully funding the full 5.57% budget that has been proposed by the superintendent. To make it incredibly simple, first, you fund 5.57%. Then, you have better school climates and culture. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Kelsey McGuire Bruce, 63 Neelens Road. Good evening, town council members. I sit before you once again as a teacher, as a parent, and as a member of this community. Last year, I sat here and said, "We cannot continue to do more with less", but we surprised you. Here we are again, still doing just that. While some of us are making do with fewer resources, fewer staff members, and larger class sizes, I want to be clear, it's not acceptable. We have gone the extra mile. We have shown up, worked longer hours, gone above and beyond expectations, stretched our resources- expectations, stretched our resources as far as they will go, all while managing the mental and emotional demands of this job. Make no mistake, going the extra mile with less isn't sustainable. And the strain it's causing on both our teachers and our students is becoming unbearable. Yes, we have been resilient, because we care deeply about our students. But resilience is not enough. It's about ensuring that we have the resources, support, and well-being necessary to provide our students with the education that they deserve. What we are doing now is not that. We are losing highly qualified, dedicated educators every day. Forty since the school year started, on their own. In the past, it's very rare to see a teacher leave in the middle of the school year. We, our school year calendars, our life calendars, are from August, September till June. But this year, we've seen over a dozen leave in the middle of the school year. That's not just a statistic. It's reflecting the toll that this situation is taking on our community, our educators, and our children. We're seeing teachers burn out and walk away because they simply can't do more. When we continue to ask educators to give their all with little to no support, we push them to the breaking point. And when we lose teachers, we lose stability, consistency, and expertise that our students need to thrive. The consequences are too great, not just for our students today, but for the future of this community. When we fail to invest in education, we fail to invest in the future of this town. I understand that budgeting is tough. Those of us who manage budgets, whether through work, volunteering, personal projects, know firsthand how challenging it can be to balance these priorities. We all feel the strain right now of the rising costs in our personal lives and our professional lives. We know that tough decisions need to be made. And respectfully, I understand you're all in a tough spot. But in times like this, we have to ask ourselves, what truly matters? The answer should be simple. Our children's education is the foundation of the future. The investment we make today in their education will shape the leaders, innovators, and thinkers of tomorrow. We cannot continue to ask teachers to go the extra mile without providing the resources to ensure that they can succeed. It is time to invest in our schools, to rebuild, and to ensure that our children receive the education that they deserve. As educators, we're telling you, and you know it, we go the extra mile for our students every day, providing supports, guidance, dedication beyond the classroom. But to truly make a difference, we need teachers, we need adequate support staff, counselors, behavior techs. We need to help address the growing demands on our students' mental health and well-being. We need up-to-date resources, including classroom materials and technology. These resources will allow us to continue our commitment to education and ensure our students receive the best possible learning experience. So members of the town council, tonight I remind you, I go the extra mile for my students every day. Now I am asking you, go the extra mile for our students by fully funding the budget proposed by the superintendent. Thank you for your time.
Seeing none. Public communications is closed. We'll move on to councilman communications, and I believe Councilman Mangini would like to speak?
No, I'm good, thank you.
You sent me a text and said you wanted to speak.
Oh, no, no, I sent you a text, I wanted to address the minutes.
Okay, sorry.
But thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Gina, anything? Bob?
No, actually, I'm good. I just have just two things. Number one, for everybody that came up and speak, very powerful comments that were made tonight. And once again, I am a proud supporter of education, and we'll be fighting for you as we move forward with this year's budget. And second of all, there is a unified special event this Saturday at Enfield High School that will involve the police department, EMS, fire departments, and best buddies allied will be involved, along with the unified program over at Enfield High School. They have a volleyball event planned. And if I missed anybody, I'm sorry. But it should be kind of fun. Plus, it's opening day of Little League, too, so.
Oh, and softball.
And softball.
Saturday and Sunday.
It's a big day, so the weather guys be with us. All right, thanks.
All set. Thanks, Bob. Jeff?
Thank you, just one quick item through the mayor to the town manager, hearing from residents in Green Manor Road area. Looking for a little extra attention, police attention, some speed enforcement. So if you could possibly add that to Sergeant Meyer and the Traffic Division's card, that would be great. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Jeff. Councilman Nasuda, do you have anything?
No, I'm good, Ken, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Councilman Ungeyer, you're good. Councilman Hendrickson. Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Thank you.
We were on a roll.
We were, but I have somebody who sent me a picture that I have to share. So, mayor to the town manager, I was sent a picture today from an Abbey Road resident regarding the sign that was put up with the sidewalks. It's kind of a rude sign, not something that this family man, who's a resident, really would like his kids to see. I can share it with you, I just got it right before the meeting. If we can have somebody take a look at that. Again, it's that whole Abbey Road sidewalk issue. If we can have somebody look at that.
Sure, please send it to us, and we'll-
I will send it to you, but if we can have somebody take a look at it, I told him I would mention it.
We will do that.
So thank you very much. To everybody who spoke tonight, thank you for coming out. I wasn't going to say anything, but I'm just going to say it. Dr. Kalman, I appreciate you coming tonight and speaking. You're my kid's pediatrician, I have a ton of respect for you. But you said something tonight, and this bothers me, that it's the up to the school to form the child. And I agree that it is up to a school. But you know what, it's not a teacher's responsibility to teach a child to behave and to have manners and to say please and thank you. It is up to the parents. It takes a village to raise a child. I was just chatting with a couple of my friends sitting in this audience tonight that knew me when I was raising my kids, and they were part of the village. me when I was raising my kids, and they were part of the village. I think we forget that, and you can't put a value on that. The teachers who came up to speak tonight, the parents who came up to speak tonight, all agreed, even if this budget passed fully, it's not enough money. It's not enough money. So what's the number? What's the number that's going to bring every child good mental health? What's the number that's going to make every child want to learn? What's the number that a teacher needs to fulfill a classroom? There's no number, and that's what bothers me. I am pro-education. I've been torn apart. I'm not education. I voted against. I am pro-education. My husband and I struggled and gave our daughters the best education we could, and now I'm doing it for my grandkids. And I'm the first one to do spelling words and after-school homework and call them and read with them, because education is what's going to make them, their futures bright. But there's not a dollar I can put on that. That's called time, it's called energy. So until I get a number that says, "This is what it's going to take," a million dollars a student, or $10,000 a student, I don't know. But everybody was in agreement tonight that even if this budget passed wholly, it's not enough money. So I think that's where the problem is. It's not a money problem. This is a problem about kids, and I don't disagree that it's a different world out there, and kids aren't getting the same as they used to get. But I think that's the problem, and I'm just going to leave it at that.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. A couple of things. To the town manager, in the last week, I've kind of sent a bunch to you, and I know you've been buried on the budget, but I just want to follow up because the residents have asked and had concerns about this. The first one is the sidewalk from Steel Road. They just redid Ann Street, and the sidewalk on Steel does not go all the way to Ann Street, about five feet short. It forces everybody to go to the crosswalk on Steel Road, but all the kids that live in the neighborhood of Ann, Belinda, Louise Drive, they're forced to go onto Steel Road and then back, and it makes no sense. If they put that extra five feet in, the kids could stay off of Steel Road. Second is, I sent you some pretty disturbing pictures today about Wallop School Park. I don't know what it is with the kids and the graffiti, but the town has spent millions of dollars over the last years trying to improve recreation throughout town just for people, and I don't even know that it's kids, to go in and put graffiti all over this stuff. I mean, the kids' playgrounds out back here have had such inappropriate stuff sprayed on them. I mean, maybe that would be a good place, because this isn't the first time for Wallop School Park. Maybe this is a good place to put a camera, and let's start catching these people who are doing this. But if we could get that graffiti off, and then the gates have been ripped down or bent so the quads can go in there and ride in the park and tear up the grass, and they're riding on the new tennis court and stuff, so if we could address that also. Next is the question, how does a resident, or a council member for that matter, have a particular road added to the roads referendum? I know every single one of us up here have people calling saying, "My road is the worst in town." Now, years ago, I was told that DPW drives down the road, they've got a monitor, it tests the road, and then it's about the length of the road, is it a deep reconstruction? The residents don't want to hear that. In particular, I've got people on Guild Street that are saying their road is atrocious. The road is bad. I'm not going to say it's not, but is it the worst road in town? Not by far. So, again, if we could, maybe at the next meeting, have Donald give a presentation of currently where we are with roads, what's remaining, and I think we're going to be starting the Roads 2026 referendum here anytime, and give an explanation of how they go about breaking down what roads get done.
We will do that, because in the past, we've done one on the index they do, and we usually have consultants come in and they rate them, so we have some impartiality, because as you're right, one person thinks their road is the worst, another thinks theirs is, and sometimes, you know, they look very bad, but under that index, they get a different rating. So we'll have them come, and we'll update that presentation for the council and our residents.
Thank you, Chris. Next is, I personally would like to thank Spazzerini Construction. They were able to bang out some roads at the end of last year, and they worked up into December, and they, you know, raked them out and seeded the edge of the road, but over the winter, it took damage, and they were back out there a couple weeks ago, regraded everything, re-hydrated the sides of the road. I think they went above and beyond, and I appreciate that. And then, my last question would be for the next public communication. When the people come forward about the budget for the schools, I would ask simply for a clarification. Are you asking us to support the superintendent's budget or the Board of Ed's budget? Because they're two totally different budgets, funded in two totally different ways. So, the superintendent put his budget out, we all heard it, and then the board called a special meeting and came back with a different budget, different numbers of employees being hired. One is a very, very, very risky budget, and that's right from the superintendent. So, when you come up, and I appreciate you coming up with your input, just let us know which budget you're referring to, because some of you, I think, said superintendent's budget, not realizing he put forward one budget, and then the board voted on another budget. So I just want clarification on which budget you guys would prefer we look at funding. And that's all I have. Thank you. So we will move on to the town manager's report.
Good evening, mayor, councilors, guests. We can't change the air conditioning. I guess there's no need. Mother Nature has accommodated us at this time of year, right? Eighty degrees down, we'll go home, it'd be 52. I have no formal report. I will follow up on all of the referrals that council has made to us this evening.
Thank you, Chris. And the assistant manager.
Couple of things. I just heard back from Donald Nunes. They're going to tackle the Wallop School issue that you just raised tonight. And the second thing is, hot off the press, we have the new concert series rolled out. We're going to be blasting it, so make sure you come out and support our sponsors who graciously sponsor this event. We've got 13 concerts lined up, and we expect to have a good time, so enjoy.
And the first one is June 3rd here. What time? What time?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
Johnny Sixgun.
Johnny Sixgun, local, so please come out and join it, and we'll have food trucks, and hopefully, we're working diligently on streaming these live, so as I've said on several occasions, our residents who are unable to come out will be able to enjoy it at home.
Town attorney's report?
We have nothing new to report. We believe the council's up to date on everything. Thanks.
Thank you, Tom. Any reports to special committees of the council? Cindy, Jim, nothing? Yeah, and it's just starting. Okay, seeing none. Unfinished business, there is none. New business, the consent agenda, there is none. And we will move to B, appointments of the town council. Charter revision committee, vacancy due -- a vacancy exists due to the resignation of Rob Anderson. Recommendation is Carl Sparazza until 11/4/2025.
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Motion to close nominations?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor of closing nominations? And roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson.
Carl Sparazza.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Counselor Russo.
Four.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Sikala.
Carl Sparazza.
Counselor Crissati.
Four.
Counselor Hendrickson.
Four.
Counselor Ludwig.
Against.
Counselor Mangini.
Carl Sparazza.
And Counselor Nasuda.
Four.
Nine in favor, one against.
Thank you very much. Next is, a vacancy exists for a member for the Loan Review Committee. Recommendation is Jim Barnes until 12/31/2025.
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded.
Motion to close.
Motion to close nominations, seconded. All in favor of closing nominations? And roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson.
Jim Barnes.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Counselor Russo.
Four.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Sikala.
Four.
Counselor Crissati.
Four.
Counselor Hendrickson.
Four.
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
James Byrne.
And Counselor Nasuda.
Four.
Ten members in favor, none against.
Thank you. Next is, a vacancy exists for the North Central District Health Department Board of Directors Enfield. The recommendation is Kevin Peritz until 6/30/2027.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Motion to close nominations?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Nominations are closed. Roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson.
Kevin Peritz.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Counselor Russo.
Four.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Sikala.
Four.
Counselor Crissati.
Four.
Counselor Hendrickson.
Four.
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Kevin Peritz.
And Counselor Nasuda.
Four.
Ten members in favor, none against.
Next is the Zoning Board of Appeals. A vacancy exists for an alternate member. Recommendation is James Barnes until 1/1/2028. Boy, he's going to be busy.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any other nominations?
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor of closing nominations? Roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Counselor Russo.
Four.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Sikala.
Four.
Counselor Crissati.
Four.
Counselor Hendrickson.
Four.
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
James Byrne.
And Counselor Nasuda.
Four.
Ten members in favor, none against.
Thank you. Next is a resolution to adopt a fine ordinance for inland, wetlands, and water course violations. The adoption of the resolution will allow the inland, wetlands, and water course agencies to give fines to violations as needed to help protect Enfield's natural resources. Be it resolved that the Enfield Town Council does hereby adopt an ordinance for the inland, wetlands, and water course agency to impose fines on violations within their jurisdiction. Date prepared 3/27/2025, prepared by Stephen Heiney, Inland, Wetlands, and Water Course Agency, LPW.
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded. Any comments, questions? Gina?
I didn't. I thought Bob did.
You have questions?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Councilman Hendrickson.
Sorry about that. I thought I had the answers, but I just have one question through the mayor to the town manager, I guess. 107 on Citation Appeal B, where it says the town manager shall appoint citation hearing officers. Citation hearing officer shall serve for a term of two years. No citation hearing officer shall be a police officer, town employee, or any other person who has the authority to issue citations. I'm just confused at who the citation officer would be and how many there are for town. I will have to defer to the town attorney since the, you know, change. We haven't had an opportunity. Nobody's asked me to appoint anybody, so quite truthfully, I have no idea. So we'll look at it and... So I guess that's a good question by Counselor Hendrickson tonight. Well, it could be. Somebody else probably knows, but I'm just saying, in regard to it, we haven't had it come up yet, so we can review. We'll have an answer for you. Okay, so I kind of thought, it's not the zoning enforcement officer. This has to be a non-town employee? That's what I'm just reading, so. Okay, we'll look and get a clarification. I had a perfect record. I've always had an answer for every question the council has asked me in 35 years, and you blew it. Here I go, blow it. I'm sorry. Thank you, that's all.
So, the question to go along with Councilman Hendrickson, who does the violations now?
Steve, why don't you come up? Because that's why we have you here, I think, this evening. Hallelujah, praise the Lord, Steve Heine, Assistant Town Planner.
Well, I want to make her feel worthy.
This was a setup. You could have called him up before, Bob, and you wanted to do that. Hit the mic there, Steve, the red button.
Testing, testing. There it is.
There you go.
So, the way that the violations are currently handled is that, me as the wetlands agent, I will issue the violations. The zoning enforcement officer, Rick Rochelli, he's also a wetlands agent. He also has the ability to issue violations, but as of right now, we don't issue citations because we don't have the ordinance passed through yet. So any citations that have been handled have been done through a zoning enforcement perspective, not a wetlands perspective. And so, I cannot speak on the behalf of how citations are handled through the zoning, because that is Rick Rochelli's area of expertise. I have not had the privilege of working underneath those requirements yet.
Right. Okay, because I believe he was involved in the First Avenue. Yeah, he did a lot of work on First Avenue, right?
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I guess my next question is, would this be a hired position? I'm just budget time, everything is falling in here, so I'm just concerned there.
My understanding is that the town currently has some hearing officers?
We had, I know in the past when I had left, we had set up various hearing officers, like for the sidewalks and others, and they get a small stipend, I believe, for doing the hearings. We can look, because we had a difficult time getting volunteers, so some of the good people, it's a very small amount, I think maybe $25 a hearing, so they're not salaried or benefited or town employees. They're really volunteers who receive...
Christie has the answer.
All right, Christie, come on down. You're all making us work. Steve, I wouldn't leave, Steve. They're not done yet.
I saw her in the hallway, and I know, because we've asked in blight and...
Hi, so for hearing officers, I know we're currently looking, and I think that's something that Cheryl's working on as well. For property maintenance, it's $50 per hearing, and then $25 per file review, so it's relatively a small amount.
So if anybody out there is interested, please contact the town manager's office, and maybe this was fortuitous. I'm glad that it happened, because we do, we're looking for people according to them, so please contact us if you're interested, and we'll let you know.
Be a nice part-time. Go ahead, Mike. Or, I'm sorry, Bob, are you all set?
I'm good, thank you.
All right, Mike.
Glad you're here. Sorry, through the mayor to you, Steve, when you gave your speech before, just without naming names, any organization or anything, when you were going saying, over and over again, you're having an issue. Just so people understand why we have to go this, what is the definition of over and over? Without naming a specific instance, company, anything, or household, why you need to go there? You know what I mean? Maybe a little more clarity? If you could, thank you.
So, without naming any specific companies, people, addresses, whatever, there are a couple of properties in town that have been in violation for several years, and we have worked with them in the past. We've tried to make them come to some sort of resolution to help bring it all together, and frankly, most cases, they will come to, what's the word? Agreement, thank you. But we have just a handful of cases where they're not doing that, and you can see that in the impacted areas around them, whether the wetlands have citation, and then they're not properly functioning, they're not properly functioning anymore, or there have been other impacts to the neighboring ecosystem.
Thank you. I think it's just, you know, I think it's good for folks to understand why we're going this route, because you're dealing with it, and it's not something, it's a year, it's like a four- or five-year sort of exercise.
Right, this is not something that'd be done after, you know, only a couple months, not seeing any resolution, and then slap the citation on. not seeing any resolution, and then slap the citation on. This is something where, if after repeated attempts over a long period of time, if there's no willing to comply...
Just to follow on Councilor Henning, so, when you slap, when a citation goes on, that's by the zoning enforcement officer?
So, wetlands...
Or is that actually from inlands or wetlands?
That will actually come from inlands and wetlands.
Perfect.
Because the zoning citations will come from the zoning enforcement officer.
Thank you, appreciate that.
And that's an excellent question, Mike. Can you recall back, and perhaps the mayor was on the council, many years back, we lobbied the legislature, and I think we should do it again when the next major comes. We used to bring the representative in our senate and say, are there any pieces of legislation that you would like to see us move forward? And we've been doing that ever since on an informal basis, but we did it several years ago when Wayne Bickley was the CEO. They didn't have authority to do the citations. And you know what? It actually is better for the town, but it's actually better for the residents, too. We had to file a full-blown lawsuit before. They'd have to get lawyers in defense. So, this is a simplified system, but it is only done when we have recalcitrant people who just, you know, won't comply or won't cooperate. So, this isn't done one-two. Rick Rochelli and our team, we work with our residents. These things are done as a last resort, but I think in the long run, it's a tool we need because you have neighbors and others who have to then be subjected to this. So, there's a fairness and equity issue to the neighbors and others as well. So, I think this is a good start. We'll see how it goes, but they don't issue them willy-nilly. It's like our police officers when the snow, you know, the yellow, the blue light goes on, and we toe at the last possible resort. They go door-to-door, they knock, they use bullhorns. In this town, we are very sensitive to our residents. I have to say, times are tough, and we don't want to add any extra burden to anybody, but again, it cuts both ways. You know, they have rights when you're violating it, but your neighbors have to live with this, too, and that isn't fair to them. So, I think this is a good addition to the quiver for the wetlands office and the commission.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
So, I tend to tune in to the meetings from time to time, same with planning and zoning, because when my grandkids aren't around, I don't have no life. My wife is doing her thing. It's pretty amazing how technology has come around, and I've seen where certain people are like, absolutely, it was like that when I bought the house 15 years ago, and you show the GIS or Google Earth picture of the house five years ago, and it wasn't like that. And, you know, you're stuck. People put in-ground pools, Southern Enfield, well, all those houses are built with swales to drain the water off because the water table's so high, then all of a sudden, somebody puts an in-ground pool right in the middle of the swale, and it floods all the houses up down the road. So, I've been watching. I think this is a great tool, and, you know, being on Blight and stuff like that, I understand they're last resorts, but sometimes, we have to resort to that. And like Mike said, and Chris, it's not fair to the neighbors who have to deal with this type of stuff, so I will be supporting this tonight. Anybody else? Roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Councilor Russo.
Four.
Councilor Ungary.
Four.
Councilor Sikala.
Four.
Councilor Crisati.
Four.
Councilor Hendrickson.
Four.
Councilor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
And Councilor Nissuta.
Four.
Ten members in favor, none against.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, Donna.
Okay, next. Next is the Resolution to Authorize the Foreclosure of Property Fines for Three Pearl You want to make a motion to waive the reading?
Motion to waive the reading.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, so, this is a resolution to authorize the foreclosure of property maintenance fines for Three Pearl Street Extension. Oh, flip it over. Be it resolved, the Enfield Town Council does hereby authorize the foreclosure of Three Pearl Street Extension for the property maintenance fines associated with the property maintenance liens recorded November 7th, 2019, at volume 2,739, page 54, and February 21st, 2025, at volume 2,2931, page 701. Date prepared 4/11/2025, prepared by Office of Economic and Community Development.
So moved.
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded. This is from Blight. This is also a property that has been on the radar with the town for years, under Troubled Properties. We have met with the gentleman. He came in, and he cannot give us a resolution to fix this situation. I am going to, and it was unanimous out of Blight, that the council moved forward with this, and if the gentleman comes up with a solution, like he decides to sell the home, because it seems like that's going to be his only way out, that we would address at that time and possibly stop the foreclosure and work with him on a fine reduction. So, we're trying. He understands, and this is about all we can do. It's kind of like what Wetlands said, you know, that we're talking 2019, these go back to. So, any other questions? And I know Councilman Santinella was in the room, so. Okay, roll call.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Councilor Russo.
Four.
Councilor Ungary.
Four.
Councilor Sikala.
Four.
Councilor Crisati.
Four.
Councilor Hendrickson.
Four.
Councilor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
And Councilor Nissuta.
Four.
Ten members in favor, none against.
Thank you. The next is a resolution to reduce the collector of revenue's annual salary. Be it resolved that in accordance with Chapter 7, Section 2 of the Town Charter, the Enfield Town Council does hereby adopt the wage adjustment to reduce the annual salary of the collector of revenue down to $105,000. Date prepared 4/14/2025, prepared by Steve Belinda, Assistant Town Manager.
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded by Councilman Ludwig. Questions?
Yes. Could we get a little bit of background on this, Mayor Nelson?
This is just adjusting the salaries because when we split the positions back apart, we had one person doing both positions. We split them, but we kept that person at his original salary, and then we promoted an assessor within the department.
That's correct.
This is reducing the tax collector's salary down to the wage...
Yeah, at the appropriate market rate now, because that position was being paid for the dual role. Once that person vacated that position and resigned, we are now correcting the salary attributed to that position. And I negotiated this with the union, and we're fair. We're both on the same page.
Right, they're on board.
Yep.
Jan?
Thank you.
Anybody else? Roll call.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Councilor Russo.
Four.
Councilor Ungary.
Four.
Councilor Sikala.
Four.
Councilor Crisati.
Four.
Councilor Hendrickson.
Four.
Councilor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
And Councilor Nissuta.
Four.
Ten members in favor, none against.
Thank you. And items for discussion, the CDBG Program Income Reuse.
I think we should keep this tabled. You know, I was going to announce again, I know we want to look at this, but I don't think we should get into it at this hour, at this time during the budget. We'll have a report next time. We're going to be having deliberations tomorrow night in the Skidical Room from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. We will have deliberations here, again, in the Skidical Room Thursday, 6:00 to 8:00 PM, and we have a meeting Monday for the public hearing in this chamber, televised for the public, at 6:00 PM, and those are all listed. So, I would just defer this until the next meeting. I think we have enough on our plate right now.
Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
All right. A motion to table? Or do I have to table?
Motion.
I don't know.
The chair has the authority to table on his own volition, or he can take a motion to table.
All right, we're going to leave it on the table. That works. Okay, next. Any other business to come before said meeting? Anybody? Nothing? And next is Public Communications. It is before 11:00 PM. Maureen?
The concert flyer, the first concert listed as the 13th...
We fixed that.
Thank you. I think they fixed it.
Steve? I think ECAC initially had it...
It was online with its... I don't know which one it was.
Okay, thank you.
Enough of that. Maureen Griffin, 98 Abbey Road, again. The superintendent submitted a budget. The Board of Ed said, please rework it. He submitted a follow-up, so the one that people are speaking about is the follow-up, which is the one that the Board of Ed voted on, so they're the same budget. Regarding the mental health issue that Dr. Kalman talked about, it's not about kids being polite. It's about kids are extremely struggling. If you listen to any of the Board of Ed meetings, they talk about the 211 and 911 calls for mental health stress and needing kids to be evaluated. Very often, they are taken out for a assessment at the hospital. We're not talking about kids being nasty to each other, just, you know, the normal, kids just teasing each other.